I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council Meeting. Today is September 8th, 2020, and the meeting is being conducted electronically. And thank you, Sarah, for setting that up again and for my cover camp. The council is present. And so first order of business is approval of minutes August 18th, 2020. And they were circulated by Mike. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes of August 18th are approved as set. Okay, public, okay, I'm sorry. No, okay, public input. Would anyone from the public like to speak? If so, make a sign and then Mike will let you in and you'll have five minutes.
That is the only person from the public who's here tonight. But I see she's got her microphone turned on or turned off, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mike. So no one from the public is speaking. Okay, first order of business is finance. And Steve Cool is here tonight, and I asked them to put this on the budget early. It's consideration of Resolution 2024 approving and adopting the IDOT Annual Street Financial Report. Steve, do you want to start? Steve Cool.
Sure. I'm just gonna take about five or 10 minutes and just go over the scope of this report and the requirements and the timeframe. The road use tax report is actually required by Iowa Administrative Code, Iowa Department of Transportation Code of Iowa. And every jurisdiction in Iowa that gets road use tax dollars has to file this report. The report has to be transmitted to the DOT by the end of this month. And if, what the general rule is, for those entities that get the report filed by September 30th, will continue to get road use tax as scheduled. Delinquencies, road use taxes held up until the report is filed. And if nobody, if the report is not filed by December 31st, then that entity loses the road use tax allocation for the rest of the fiscal year. So anyway, what I have here is, this is the pre-final of the report that I would be transmitting to the state, hopefully this week. I just, the scope of this report is just very narrow. It's only based on receipts and expenditures that are applicable to streets, sidewalks, and related infrastructure of the city. So we're not going to have anything with the police department, general city administration, library, and so forth in this report. This is just very narrowly restricted to the how the road use tax money is spent and then any related items such as debt service and capital projects. So I'm just gonna take you through the worksheet real quick here, just a couple of the pages. These are the expenses. Starting from the top here, street maintenance expense, that's just basic repairs and maintenance. We only had $9,000 this last year. That's quite a bit lower than in the past. I think we've got some repair projects coming up in this fiscal year. Second line, capacity improvement. That is the Olive Court contractor, $101,000. That was the first pay estimate that was paid in June. The next three lines pertain to debt issues. About two-thirds of the 2016 OUP bond is related to the infrastructure. And then all of the 2017 is a street bond. So just those portions of the principal and interest in the annual servicing fees are included in the debt service column. Transfer out, that's a transfer from Special Assessments to the Debt Service Fund. That is to pay for part of that 2016 bond issue. Street lighting, that's self-explanatory. Traffic control is basically traffic lights, street signs, and other way expenses pertaining to traffic flow. Snow removal, $7,000. Engineering fees, these are just the fees paid to shut a battery that are applicable to streets, sidewalks, and related. So in the road use tax column, $27,000. We have the regular monthly charges, costs for street and sidewalk monitoring and so forth. And then also there was smaller court engineering fees. In the capital projects column, $17,802. These are the engineering fees that have been incurred since the actual project began. And then street cleaning, that's just weekly. So we've got $368,000 of expenses there. Next page, this would be the revenues. First line, that is property taxes levied. That $33,900, that is, that's the 2017 bond issue. And that bond issue is paid fully by debt service levy. Second line, the road use tax, $135,000. Special assessments, $76,000. Okay, I do have one correction to make between the next two lines, contributions and sale of assets. Okay, the contribution line, what that is, is that was the 39,908. That was the developer's contribution to the Olive Court project. One thing I need to move, I had it, I've got it in the sale assets row there, but it needs to be moved up to contributions. City of Iowa City made their first payment towards the Olive Court project, $21,679. So 39,908 should be $61,587. And then sale of assets, that's $57,711. Sale of assets, that's the money that we've had on hand since the Olive Court, my land sale from a couple of years ago. So that $57,700 was the first amount that was used to pay for the first contract payment. First of all, you know, be using that money until you get to the bonding process. Transfer in, that was just that transfer from Special Assessments into the Debt Service Fund to pay for a portion of the 2016 bond. So we actually took in, we actually took in more revenue than expense related to street and sidewalk projects last year. That's pretty, pretty much self-explanatory, just in the street maintenance. We had very little street repairs since last year. Prior years, we've had, we've had more in various degrees, you know, maybe a few 10,000 years, it's been close to 50,000, 60,000, something like that. We had a very, very quiet year on that. So anyway, we came out ahead so far on that. The rest of the pages on here. Third page, there's one page of the report that I have to list, the bonds. And we just have 2016 and 2017 bond issues or street related. The next two pages will not have any information. Let's see, this next page is, that would be for any street department equipment owned by the city, which we have none. Next page is significant contracts completed during the year. We did not have any, that's over the public bid threshold, which is $45,000. And of course, we didn't have any jobs that were completed as of June 30th. Next year on this report, we will have the Olive Court project, what is listed on that project page. So we don't have any. And then the last page is just summary of the beginning balance, expenses, revenues, and ending balances. Let's see here, we have, we have about $119,000 in the road use tax fund. And then Special Assessments, we have about $114,000. Special Assessments has a balance because a certain number of the other owners in OUP, rather than paying their Special Assessments over the eight, 10, or 12-year period, whatever their due, some people paid them all in one lump sum. So we have, so that money is gradually going to be spent over the years on that portion of the 2016 bond. So anyway, that's, that is the information that will be transmitted to Iowa Department of Transportation. Reports based on all approved revenues and expenditures this last year. And it is, it's the smallest and easiest report that the city files for the year. So I think that was all I had. You know, it's, it's pretty self-explanatory. We had a pretty quiet year on the Streets Department and so forth, so.
Any questions for Steve?
I've got a question, Louise, just to see if I understand this, Steve. This doesn't necessarily match up with the budget that we prepared through August, does it?
Through August, no, this is July through June.
July, so this is a whole of last year, basically?
Fiscal year.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, I get it. And then the contributions of the developer, did the fellow who developed the condominiums, you know, in Iowa City that, that extend, you know, part of the sidewalk over to Olive Court, was he, was he required to pay anything?
Yes. Yes, he's talking about Jeff Hendrickson, and maybe Josiah wants to say, but he contributed. An arrangement was made when he built those condominium duplexes and single-family houses there around Olive and Lemur. That's what you're talking about? And he, an agreement was made that he would contribute to the street building, and it was a certain percent, and it figured out to be, that's a very good question, because it figured out to be a little over $100,000. And so he was just showing what he contributed up to June 30th, 2019, on that form. But altogether, Josiah, you know best what he contributed, and I don't know if Jos, you know.
So he's already, he's already contributed that?
He's been billed periodically.
Okay, so he's, he's already taken care of that. And then, so Iowa City, we're shown as a developer, they paid for some of the water improvements and maybe some of the sewer improvements then? Okay, and so in that, in that fund now, we've got $232,000, is that right, Steve? Or that's, that's what the balance was as of June 30th?
Yeah, balance left over, yeah. Yeah, related to streets, street capital projects and available funds, yeah, $232,000, that's right.
Thanks, that's all I have.
And Steve, you had talked, Steve Cool, you talked about the road use tax, and because of COVID, you had adjusted that number. Or is that, did that number come out what you thought it would be?
Well, when we, when we did the original budget, we budgeted $135,000. And that was slightly less than the year before. I don't recall the exact number, but it was close to that range. And we went with a conservative $135,000. Well, then in, when we did the amended budget back in April, when we were looking at that 25% or 30% potential traffic decrease, I think that may have been, that may have been true on just like personal travel. But with all the additional travel for essential workers, basically, you know, truck drivers and so forth, putting in extra time and so forth. What we did was, we estimated that based on the Department of Transportation traffic declines, we lowered that budget from $135,000 down to $123,000. But actually turns out, we collected with the original budget amount, just a little bit over the original budget amount. So we really didn't take any kind of a hit from the original budget. Then also, there was another update letter that came out from the DOT last month in August, and they had revised, it was based on updating traffic counts and so forth. And traffic counts taken last month in August were similar to, almost same as traffic count in August of 2019. So based on that, I don't think we're really gonna probably take too much of a hit on any kind of a loss on road use tax fund. So we'll have to watch it and see how it goes, but that came out much better than what we were expecting.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any more questions? We have consideration of Resolution 2024 approving and adopting the IDOT City Street Financial Report. Is there a motion?
A motion?
Motion by Bobby, and you want to do a second, Casey?
Yeah, that'll be fine, Louise.
Second by Casey. Any further discussion? Mike, will you do a roll call vote?
Cook?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales? Motion carries?
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Steve, for joining the meeting.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I'll get this transmitted this week, and then I'll let you know when it's been transmitted then.
Okay. Bobby, did you have anything else, Bobby, you wanted to bring up at this time, or?
Not related to any of that, no.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to Mayor's Report. And I have two resolutions. Consideration of Resolution 2025 authorizing to sign and attest to an agreement with ER Assist, Inc., for disaster response and recovery funding, which will help the city identify, track, and seek reimbursements to, for recoverable expenses related to the duration. Am I saying that right, duration, I practiced it. So with this, as Steve put in his report, and Troy also referred to it, this is a company that Johnson County Emergency Management had recommended to Troy and I for smaller cities that don't have full-time staff to acquire some help for the city to identify storm recovery and response costs. And these, this assistance would also be covered by, the money would be recovered by FEMA, too. And so as Steve wrote, it's in the resolution, it's a limit of $3,500. But Troy and I talked about this, and we, and we met with Susan Hartman over the phone, in a phone conference. And one thing that got me is that she said, "You might not know of some things that you don't think are recoverable, and I can look at them and tell you if they are or not. And I have saved some cities some money to recover some of this, and also help us fill out the forms and get that ready to go." Did, I mean, Troy wrote very nicely in his report. Are there any questions about it? This Resolution 2025 is before you, and I'm looking for a motion.
A motion.
Motion by Sarah, is there a second?
I'll second, Louise.
Okay, second by Lisa, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote for resolution.
Moore?
Aye.
Moore? O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales? Cook?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Okay, thanks, everyone. Now we'll go to Resolution 2027. And this is consideration of 2027 requesting reimbursement from the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund and FEMA Public Assistance Program. And Steve wrote in his report, and Troy also wrote in his report as Troy and I attend these meetings. And this is reimbursement that we want to, we need this resolution for the State of Iowa through Federal Cares Act for expenses related to the pandemic. And we are, Troy has been computing the, with Lori, the police department's payroll from March 1st to March to July 31st. 25% of those costs are eligible for reimbursement through this relief fund. And then Steve had sent an email to the council, and Sarah recommended that our Zoom meeting costs could be put in as an expense, $149. And then Steve said if there's any more, he'd change the resolution. So I'm sure nobody had any extra, but that's what this is about. And so this Resolution 2027 is before you. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Sarah, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lisa, now, any further discussion?
Did someone send some additional items?
Sarah just sent the one that I know of, the Zoom.
Steve? Yeah, sorry.
Oh, I didn't see any.
I think it was the same. I got, I got the, Sarah had the Zoom subscription. And then today, Troy and Lori sent over some sanitizing, you know, sanitizer stuff, which was a small item, but then the big item is the payroll. The governor's guidance provides that 25% of payroll costs that are incurred are presumed to be dedicated to the COVID response. And so, so that's a big item. It amounts to about $40,000, 25% of UHPD payroll from March 1, 2020 till July 31. And I sent an email that has the calculation, and then I updated the resolution itself to include those items. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I couldn't, it just kind of came in, so I got that to you pretty late here.
That was my fault, and in working with Lori, I wasn't sure as far as payroll expenses, I guess, were eligible, particularly me, their biweekly pay would be eligible, but I wasn't sure on benefits, things like that. So again, Lori said she has the spreadsheets and could help parse that out, how close the numbers are, but maybe.
I see the sanitized. Okay, I somehow missed that latest email with the sanitizing products, and I see, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Okay, Mike, will you do a roll call vote?
Here, speaking. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Carried.
Okay, thank you. I have a few quick things to add. I rescheduled cleanup day that's normally in the spring to September 19th, Saturday from 9:00 to 11:00. And Lisa put a nice thing on the website about, about the date and where it's located. Every year dumpsters are located at the 200 block of Marietta Avenue by Grandview Court. But this year, we will follow COVID-19 safety protocol with face coverings and physical distancing encouraged, and hand sanitizer will be available. We aren't, we are just having the dumpsters, we're not adding metal or anything extra because of COVID. And, and as Lisa pointed out to me, probably we've all gone through our house being in COVID and have some things that we want to get rid of. And so I wanted to go over what's on the website, just for the audience that might be listening on TV, that there's no yard waste allowed, no cardboard, no appliances, no hazardous materials, no computers or TV monitors, no tires, no lead acid batteries, no oil. And so, but I want to thank Steve Smith for willingly set up another day. And if anyone would like to volunteer that day, get ahold of me. We need, still need some volunteers. The other thing is, I spoke with Zach from Quality Care, because even though we had all those trees taken down, I'm sure we have some leaves yet to fall. And so we have some leaf vacuuming dates. And the first date will be starting Monday, October 26th. It usually takes about three days for them to get around town. So that first week will be October 26th. And depending on where they start, you could be the second or third day. And the second date is November 16th, that, starting that week. And then the third date will be announced in spring, and we'll have a spring cleanup day. And I just want to say, leaves should be kept on the grass on the city right away. Do not put them in the curb area of the streets. Okay, so that's what I have there. And then also, Sarah has in her written report, very nice, she talks about the Committee to Review Restrictive Covenants. And so that's in Sarah's report. And then the last thing, if there's no questions there, we'll go to the hotel update. And did, did they join us yet? Did anyone from the hotel join?
Greg Stultner is here.
Oh.
Louise?
Oh, I see, Greg's there. Okay. Welcome, Greg, do you want to give the hotel update?
Yeah, we, we, I don't know where Jim left off last time, but I don't know how long you want me to talk, but I can let you know, we're.
I have 10 minutes.
Yeah. We, fifth floor is vinyl and tile is going on in fifth floor. We're getting ready to hang the doors on all the rooms on fifth floor and finish the hallway pretty soon here. We're gonna be, furniture's gonna start coming in. And then fourth floor was turned over to us today by the drywaller. So we're gonna be vinyl and tile in fourth floor. And then we're, we're trying to schedule carpet as soon as we can. As far as progress goes, third is a little bit farther behind, second's a little bit farther behind that. And then first floor is, we're starting to get a lot of trades on first floor now, rough in trades. And then that's, we're gonna blow that out pretty quick, too. The exterior, we had some issues with the guy putting the exterior on the brick. He ran out of grout, and that's been, that's been a delay and it's been frustrating. But he is supposed to get started back this week, today, tomorrow. So we're waiting on him to get started back, so finish up the. So we're waiting on him to get started back, so finish up the exterior of the building. We've been pouring a lot of concrete, we're trying to get that, you know, buttoned up. We've been working with Josiah, what's getting what he needs done. Working through that a little bit right now with the street and the, making sure we do our due diligence on traffic control and pedestrian control. So I know Josiah had some, some comments that we're incorporating and getting, we're working on getting back some answers and updating the prints for Josiah for the pedestrian and the traffic control. So we'll have that to him hopefully tomorrow, I'm hoping. I asked the civil engineer where that was at today and he's got it, he's got that to the draftsman and hopefully Josiah should see that, those comments updated on the prints tomorrow. So as far as the hotel goes, does anybody get any questions on the update of the hotel or, or concrete, exterior, civil at all at this point?
When's your date of completion?
November 29th is opening date, is what we have scheduled right now with Marriott. So that's the idea that, that's the plan right now. We're behind schedule right now, but we had a meeting this morning with all the contractors and I kind of put my foot down and, and told them we need to pick up the pace and to make sure we hit that date, so.
Very good.
Marriott comes in a couple of weeks before and starts training, so. Is there any questions on the actual construction part? Because I have some other stuff I wanted to talk about.
Did you have much stone damage, Greg?
Not really. It was a couple of pieces that came off, but it was relatively, it was just mostly insulation, exterior insulation. It was easily put back on, so. With no other questions, I'll move on to the, some new, I guess, things that's come to the hotel management part of it. Our restaurant owner, Peter Harmon, sent me an email last week, essentially letting us know that he's terminating his lease with us, or wants to terminate his lease with us. And, and we went ahead and granted that. So at this point, Peter Harmon is not going to be putting a restaurant on top of a hotel. And, and mostly he, the reasoning is just revenue issues with COVID, revenue issues with football, not, big part of his business is with football and as well as downtown being shut down. He just had a really tough year and he just, he just, you know, essentially told us he can't, he doesn't feel like he can make it. He can't make his rent due, so he's, he asked to terminate the lease and we granted that to him. So he, at this point, the sixth floor of the restaurant is not going to be him. And we're talking within our team, what to do, what to, to use the, the sixth floor for at this point. And, and we don't feel like any restaurant owner at this point will want to open up a restaurant in the middle of COVID. So we do have a fabulous restaurant on first floor that's going to be, it's going to have a really large menu. And we just talked to, we spoke to Marriott last week on improving upon our menu. And they gave us a green light to do pretty much whatever we want as far as menu items. As long as we serve what they want on their menu, we can add to that. And then as far as sixth floor goes, we're, we're looking at, you know, options there. But what's came to mind is a convention center, you know, meeting space for the hospital. I know that they have a lot of seminars and I know that they use the Marriott Hotel in Corville a lot for, for a lot of their meetings. You know, the University of Iowa Foundation, they have a lot of meetings. It's, so I think based on what we feel like could be the best generator for revenue would be a convention meeting space. And so that's the idea that we're going to have a meeting Thursday. We're going to meet on Thursday with my team to talk about. The sixth floor will still have the kitchen, full-sized kitchen, very large kitchen. So if we ever wanted to turn it into a restaurant, it would be easily, every, like fifth floor is pretty much done. So all the services and utilities are up to sixth floor for restaurant or whatever we want. So it won't ever be an issue if we ever decide to make it a restaurant. It won't ever be an issue or a problem construction-wise, because it's ready to go for a restaurant right now for, you know, any mechanical, electrical, plumbing, et cetera. So, and then we're going to go ahead and put the roof in for the restaurant to service the convention area. So at, at this point, we just feel like we, we don't feel like we can get a restaurant owner to jump on it because of COVID, so. But I'm, I'm optimistic about the, the convention space. I think, you know, especially December, January, if we can get done, we can, you know, get, you know, potentially Christmas, Christmas outings, you know, for company, Christmas outings there. So I'm, I'm optimistic for January, February and hopefully spring continues on with other options, so. But that's the latest news and if you guys got any questions, you know, let me know.
I have a question for Steve. Steve, there's a developer's agreement about the restaurant. Does this, with a restaurant not being able to open there and this type of meeting space or event, is that a problem? Does something need to be changed or with the agreement?
Yeah, I don't think anything needs to be changed with the developer's agreement. The zoning ordinance, initially the hotel wasn't going to have that sixth floor. And then when we, when the council adjusted the height restriction for the hotel to, to let it be a taller building, the zoning ordinance specifies that the sixth floor can only be used for a rooftop restaurant, is what it says. And it goes on to say that it can't, that that floor can't be enclosed and used for hotel rooms. And then it says, or for any other purpose. So it's clearly Greg's not talking about a hotel room, so I'm not too bothered by that. I'm going to probably talk with Greg and Jim a little bit about a little more detail in terms of their plans. If anything, the council may want to consider amending the zoning ordinance just to specify that, yeah, you still can't have hotel rooms up there, but if convention center is something that would be, you know, convention space, it would be appropriate as far as the council's concerned, we might modify that. But I'll have to look at that and talk with the developers a little more, but nothing in the development agreement. And I don't think there'll be any, any major change that's needed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you Greg for.
Thanks for having me.
Now we go on to the legal report and Steve, you sent a legal report. Did you want to say anything else?
Not really, I think all of the items in the report are covered in other, in other parts of the agenda. Unless anyone has questions.
Yeah, very good, I'll ask, I'll ask about the next item, which is the housing code, rental housing code. Okay, so we'll go on to city clerk report and Chris and Mike sent a report. Mike, did you want to?
We don't really, I don't really have much more to add to it. We are working through the rental permit process as we shared last month with the new online form. We are getting a lot of responses. You'll see that despite the derecho and everything else, we are, we are still moving ahead with landlords responding back. We are currently in the process of putting out a second notification to anybody that we haven't heard from yet just to make sure that they are reminded of that September 30th due date, because anything after that does carry a penalty with the rental permit fee. But otherwise, we're moving right along.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll go to the city treasurer's report and we had, you sent the warrants and then we had a couple additions, Lori, that I sent, but somehow.
I just emailed with the additions on it.
Okay, and the additions are, there's two, right?
I think there's six.
Oh, there's six, okay, see, I missed that, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I just did it.
Okay, I feel better, thank you. Okay, could you, okay, there they are, down at the bottom. One, two, oh, the Visa bill came in, the Visa bills.
No, they didn't, but I looked it up on a business management login.
And that's the domain, domain change and September phone service. And just so council knows, Black Squirrel did the storm cleanup and that was 98,100. And BWC excavating did the other storm cleanup. I approved that for Josiah because they were working on Olive Court and they could remove it for us in a timely manner and they needed to continue. So that's why we have another bill of 625, something like that from them that separated out. So are there any objections to paying the bills?
I've got a question, Louise. On the, do we get any relief from the state for the derecho expenses that we've incurred?
Yes, that's what we'll go through with the, with Susan Hartman of ER Assist.
Okay, so I'm jumping the gun on that, okay, thank you.
That's good, but we should be able to get 90%, but it'll be 80, 85, 90%. But at the most it'll be, I was told 90%, but sometimes the president, you know, adjusts the FEMA bill, so we'll have to see.
Okay.
So we should, I'll let you know about that, that's a good question. Are there any objections to paying the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. Thanks everyone, thank you Lori. Then we go to Troy's report and Sarah's report. Troy, you sent a, a report and then you have this Resolution 2026 that you explained in it. Do you want to, thank you, you want to talk about it? Is he on, oh, you're on mute.
There, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right, sorry Mike, I had to move, my wife is busy upstairs, so. Yes, so the resolution is about Chris Barnham doing the data analysis for University Heights. Once we started collecting data earlier this year, I contacted Chris about doing the, the analysis of it. We had a conversation and, and anyway, bottom line is, an MOU had yet to be signed between University Heights and Chris and his research team. So he sent me that MOU, I asked Attorney Ballard, I asked Steve to review it. In the time since Chris sent it, I had, I'd noticed that the years on it probably were the ones that were originally discussed, analysis of data for 2019, 2020 and 2021. And if we're paying for two years or two and a half years of analysis, we want to make sure we get the right years done. And we started collecting data in 2020, so Chris amended the MOU, plus he changed some language. Steve reviewed the legal language at the end and said he had no issues with that. I just want to go through kind of points one through four, paragraphs one through four on it. Chris's research group is CR Research and part of what the MOU specifies is that he will review all of University Heights traffic stop data for years 2020, 2021 and 2022. The review will compare or include all of the data analysis similar to what he has done with, with the Iowa City Police Department and other agencies, which includes comparison to a base outline and analysis of post-op outcomes, analysis of, of any disproportionality in those outcomes and assessing individual officers, I guess, performances to see whether anything's out of line. But that's all outlined in number one and the MOU is really for two years worth of data analysis. But I spoke with Dr. Barnham about the fact that we would only have a partial year in 2020 and also the difficulty, the issue sometimes in bringing data online. So Chris is going to analyze our 2020 data, a partial set of data, to make sure there are no issues with our collection and, and do what he can for an analysis for that year. And then he'll do a full analysis for each of the following years. Paragraph two is he will present his findings, either according to this, either in written or oral form. And he will also on an occasion that you specify, come and present to council. Number three is release of all relevant data. What that is, is this is part of a larger study for Dr. Barnham. He is providing a service to us and he is glad to do so and he will profit from that. But he is also looking at this in a much larger global situation and he will use the data we provide in that larger study or to his own purposes. In number four, paragraph four is the actual cost of the analysis. It is $10,000 for two and a half years worth of analysis, again, two full years plus our partial year to be paid in two different installments, one in by January 15th, one and the second payment the following year. I had a little bit of discussion with both the mayor and Councilor Moore with Lisa and I believe those numbers are consistent with what council discussed when Dr. Barnham came in and presented prior to my arrival. If I'm remembering correctly, the amount discussed for, for a year's analysis there was approximately $6,000. So this is two and a half years, but it's basically a two-year contract, Hill and, Hill Analyzer, two and a half years worth of data and that will be the cost to University Heights. I don't think it is money well spent. I think that we are ahead of the curve, particularly in Iowa. I think that, I think that it is wise to identify issues, to look in the mirror, identify issues and take any corrective measures as we're able, rather than chasing their tail. So I would ask and recommend that council approve that.
Okay, the Resolution 2026 is before you, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Louise.
Motion by Casey. And a second by Casey, discussion.
I've got a question for Troy. Is this by, you know, I suspect he's not going to have it ready by the time we deal with the committee report on Sarah's, Sarah and my committee, mostly Sarah's committee, to determine if Cozer and Lemer should be renamed. Is this some, is this kind of information, something we can bring into that committee, Troy?
I will ask Dr. Barnham, but my, my belief is that no, it won't be something, Casey. We started collecting it earlier this year. I am still working through the JEC and our software providers. The data is being collected, but it cannot yet be broken out to the detail that Dr. Barnham wants. Barnham also cautions against, we have kind of competing. Barnum also cautioned against, we have kind of competing interests here. He cautioned against. Looking at smaller pieces of the data set because they become less and less. I don't know, relevant or I don't know why even the way statistical terms are, or he would prefer that they be yearly analysis. But I will see what we can break out, Casey, and see if I can get him to, he's, he, in an email that we exchanged. I can't remember which, yesterday or today, he said he is more than willing to look at what we have collected so far as. We were able to get it to him to make sure that, again, we are, we're, we're collecting robust and accurate data. And I'll see what I can get for you and share with you, but I, I think that it's unlikely.
Well, anything you can share was would be most welcome and, and thanks very much for doing this.
Are there any other questions? So there's a motion and a second for consideration of resolution twenty twenty-six. If there's no further questions, Mike, will you do a roll call vote?
Yes, speaking. Scott?
Hi, sorry, I'm muted.
That's okay, no problem. Swales? Cook? O'Sullivan? Motion carries?
Okay, Troy, did you have anything else you wanted to share?
Yes, just briefly, in speaking about the COVID relief, the government fund, I'm not sure that I was coming across when I was speaking, but. Again, I asked Lori to put those together, those numbers. She, she was able to send them to me. Told me that they might be confusing to me to look at. I don't know whether it's just the actual payroll expenses or whether that includes benefits. But the information she provided includes all of that and between she and Steve, hopefully we can submit and get what we want. But all that information is there. Need to work with the NAACP, that's all written out. I did wanted to mention, did want to mention, I did not include this in my report. It's the last thing I mentioned is that I believe the twenty fifteen Ford Taurus may be sold. I presented the information to a small department, an Iowa Department Chief who is taking it to council. And it looks good. I just, I don't want to commit to it, but it would be for the amount that. Cool and I had discussed is for, is what it'd be worth. So that may, may be something that we'll get to see here very near future. But I just wanted to report that we are moving towards disposing of those vehicles.
Any questions for Troy about his report? Okay, thank you.
Here, I just may not be on screen, so if you need anything, just holler.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, you sent a written report. Did you want to add anything or?
No, nothing to add, just as I say in my report and coordinating the committee that's going to review the history of the. You know, racially restrictive covenant. We had five, we had five residents and then Casey and myself who are going to serve on that and. If anyone knows of anyone else who wants to serve, they can contact me. So I'm working on scheduling that. It looks like we're gonna be able to find a date later this month, but nothing's specified yet.
Any questions for Sarah? Okay, we'll go on to. The engineer report and streets and sidewalks. So Josiah, did you want to start that?
Sure, I'll go ahead. A couple of highlights from the report. So starting with Olive Court, I guess the biggest development. Since the weather cooled down is they got the sod placed throughout the project. The final completion date for the contractor is the end of this week, so we're going through the list and trying to. Identify any remaining items that need to finish up this week. With the exception, as I noted, that we expect the trees will be planted later than this Friday. I don't have a solid date on that yet, but we're just getting into the, the window for tree planting in the fall.
So they will be planted yet this fall?
Correct, yep. Related to that project and also the earlier discussion on the street repairs, we've got street repairs on Melrose and Cozer. That were added to the street work contractor. Those were some of these ones that they were not able to get done prior to the close of the fiscal year. But they are scheduled to occur this month. So looking ahead to next year, I met with Doug a couple of weeks ago. We talked about some projects. And we'll be doing a walkthrough of the city this month to identify potential street and sidewalk projects for the next fiscal year budget. And then the other project we've got going for next year, the Gulfview Drive Parking and Drainage Improvements. We've started the preliminary design work on that. I don't have a layout to show you, but I think we should finish that this week and then we're gonna also update the cost estimate just to make sure we're on track. And we'll submit that to the council for review and comment. Again, that project is to be bid this winter for construction starting next spring.
Okay, any other questions for Josiah?
I've got a question. I'm sorry about that. Josiah, on Olive Court, did you take out a bunch of trees? Before we're gonna be planting the new ones and how many trees do you think you took out?
I think roughly the trees that were there that came out was around. Sixteen, maybe?
Unusual in a road project to take out a bunch of trees, but the issue is you, you try to replace those trees after the fact.
Yeah, that, that's what we went with in this project. I mean, given how narrow that street was and a lot of those trees that were on the street. Had been evaluated by Arborist a number of times over the last years. And a lot of them were not in good shape and some of the ones that were had grown themselves into the side of the street. And, and so we did, we did take them out, but we're replacing them, we're replacing about twenty-two trees. New trees, round eleven on each side and those trees are, those trees are much different than the ones that were on Olive Court. And that are in a lot of places around town. They're, they were selected to be more suitable for street trees. So they're smaller diameter trunks and roots.
They're, they're less likely to cause heating in the sidewalks, for example.
Yep, that, that's, that's the intent, yep.
And of the trees that you took out, were, were they causing heating in the sidewalk?
I'm sure some of them were because some of those trees, the trunks and the roots were. Huge, you know, they basically filled up the entire space between the street and the sidewalk. So the, the roots were enormous. So I would say yes.
Louise, I wonder if on next month's agenda, we're not gonna talk about it now, but I know that you're. Very concerned about sidewalk repair and so am I. And a lot of the sidewalk repairs we talked about is because of tree roots heating on the sidewalk. And I think the council has talked before about replacing sidewalk at their expense and having owners. Maintain the sidewalks from that point on and I'd like to have a little more discussion on how we might do that. If we, if we're, you know, ready to, to pay for those panels and. Let the landowners take care of the sidewalk or if we're, we're gonna continue to expect the landlords to put in the sidewalk. And I just knew you'd weigh in on that when we talk about it next month. Is that something we could have on the agenda?
Yes, and I mean Doug Swale should be called into way on it too, since he's streets and sidewalks. And since he'll be walking the streets and sidewalks with Josiah, I'm sure he'll be able to give some input on that too.
Yeah, and when you do that, what I, what I'd encourage you to do is look at the, the big trees that we have. And. You know, where the sidewalk is heaving, why the sidewalk is heaving and I act, you know. We have to make some accommodations to preserve the trees and I don't know what those are exactly, but I want you, you guys. You know, if you guys could think about it and give us some feedback, I appreciate it.
Okay. Doug, did you want to add to the streets and sidewalks report? I mean, I know you're gonna be. Looking at the tree, at the sidewalks anyway and.
Yeah, yeah, we're trying to get with Josiah here in the next, hopefully in the next week we can get together. We've been. Played with a lot of heat and storms and cleanup and everything, so we haven't been able to get to our walkthrough. Counselor Lisa has also pointed out some issues and she has brought those to my attention too and she would like to. Maybe tag along and show me what the, the one she's talking about. So we will get to them as soon as we absolutely can. The only other thing that I would, was questioning was the sod on. All of there, how long are they gonna continue to water that? And if they ran out of time or we're gonna ask them to, you know, go out a little bit longer if, you know, now that we're getting some rain, I guess. Probably is a moot point, but how long are they required to keep that grass watered?
Well, by their, by their specification on the project, they have a warranty period of thirty days. Where they have to maintain and water that sod. So we don't, we do not accept that sod until after that thirty days. So that gives us the opportunity to reject, reject sections that died or did not, did not survive or don't look good. So it's on them to. To make it work. So we, and, and in effect, we haven't. Accepted or paid for any of that yet.
After the thirty days, hopefully it, it does take off and it becomes a responsibility of who.
If it's, at the end of thirty days, it needs to be well established and growing. So at that point. The city can accept it and they take over. It becomes the city's project, just like the street or the sidewalk or.
Yeah, very good. And then the, the only other thing Josiah and I are working on are the. The freshwater placards, you know, the little green and blue. Emblems that go above the storm drains to let everybody know not to dump in the freshwater drains there. A lot of those are missing and Josiah is gonna be getting a map of all the storm drains around the city. And I've been driving around on my motorcycle on various nights and I would say probably seventy-five percent are missing. From. Where they were supposed to be labeled on or the glue must have let go and now they're long gone, but we do need to get those put back on first chance we get, so. As soon as I get that map, I'll go around and I'll check them off on the, this map and then we can get some of those ordered and get them glued back down. That's about all I have.
Are there any questions for Doug?
I, I have a question for Doug. The, the five-year capital improvements budget that the council asked me to prepare. I got the feeling Doug that you were gonna look at those costs and maybe refine them. Are you satisfied with the way they are? Or do you have any input on that?
Josiah and I talked about the, the numbers and I'd say he's got a pretty good grasp of what it costs. Because, you know, he sees them all the time and like I say, I do have friends that are in the contracting and concrete business, I should say, and they could give me. Some, some realistic numbers. So between Josiah and, and my resources, I, I think we can come up with a pretty. Pretty accurate, you know, real world numbers to, to give to you folks so you can do a little better on the, the budget. Preparation. So yeah, we're, we're working on that right now too. So we'll get you some real numbers and get back to you on that.
I, I kinda wanted to, to get the council's input on that tonight. I talked with Josiah. A couple of weeks ago, when was it that we talked, Josiah, do you remember?
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago and, and I got the feeling that you guys could look at that. Those costs are based on what we actually paid. For the Olive Court improvement, so they couldn't, they can't be, you know, they can probably be refined, but I don't think we're gonna gain that much and we can. Refine that, that, you know, budget over time, but it was, the idea I think is to give us a relative comparison. As to what the cost might be, not a precise, you know. A precise idea of what the, the costs actually are, but I don't think it's, it's gonna be too far off. So I think those are numbers that we can probably use.
For the purpose, you're saying Steve or Casey, for the purpose of just, just getting down the road with the five-year.
That's right. I, I mean, I think, I think you're hoping to, to write the five-year budget and, and you're gonna need something so that you can. Move ahead on that and I don't want to drag you back to, you know, drag you down.
I, I guess I, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I feel pretty good about it. I feel like it's gotta be ballpark in the right place. It at least allows us to get down the. Court a little bit with something that's realistic, you know.
Yeah, and I don't think we have to know everything to, to know anything, so to speak.
We're not, I guess, just to clarify, we're not really making any decisions on, this is the final say on the projects and that thing, but. Generally speaking, it's pretty close to what we want to do, right?
I think so, yeah.
So from that standpoint, I'm fine with, I, I'm fine with the ballpark numbers unless Doug or. You know, Josiah or someone else says. Says they don't think they're usable or something.
Well, and then we can, and then we can refine the budget, but I think that's something that's gonna have to happen over time regardless. In other words. That plan is not written in stone. It's, it's a, you know, it's a suggestion. So that we can use relatively good numbers and move forward and that's what we're trying to do.
And so my understanding was that. Doug and Josiah were gonna assess streets and sidewalks. Wouldn't that be? A pretty important step in this.
Well.
I'm not jumping on board with, I mean, I don't even know what, was that from the last meeting? I thought. There was gonna be some refinement to that.
I was hoping that would happen at this meeting, but it sounds to me like, you know, it's something that we can accommodate as we go down the line. As we go down the line. I think those, those figures are relatively accurate. And I didn't, I didn't hear anything from Josiah in our conversation. We had a private conversation that would contradict that. Too much. One of the things that we're concerned about is if you're trying to figure out what sidewalks cost. There's a certain amount of setting up and rubbing and grading and whatnot that apply to the whole project and it's difficult to prorate those. On the sidewalk alone. And so we tried to overestimate what that would cost by including both sides of the street. And then applying those to individual sidewalks, you know, just one side. So I think if anything, we should be high on that. On the, on the cost of streets, that's pretty much more reliable because. It includes the entire cost of Olive Court. It's, I think it was six hundred and seventy-one. Dollars a linear foot. That's what we paid. And so I wouldn't expect if we redid Cozer or Highland Avenue. That'd differ a whole lot from that.
Well, Casey and Lisa, I, I still do plan to review the cost on a number of those projects we talked about, so. I will continue to do that and I think Doug as, will as well.
That'd be great. What, what kind of, what kind of deadline are you talking about, Josiah? Can we get that done by the next meeting?
Perhaps. What is the, what is the? Council's schedule for implementing the capital improvement plan? Or adopting it or, I, I'm not entirely familiar with how you will use it or what needs to be done to prove it.
Well, and I'm looking at these, you know, there's a list here of sidewalks. Have we talked about, we're gonna do this. I mean, that's kind of what I'm asking. I'm not talking price so much as. There's a list that says, I mean, what I'm looking at, maybe this is out of date. It's what's on the last agenda.
Yeah.
Something was sent late, so. Are we, have we decided we're doing this? That's what I'm expecting from Doug and Josiah to come up with. A reasonable plan here.
That's based on the comprehensive plan, Lisa, and so it's.
Yeah, I know you said in your report, it's based on the comprehensive plan, which is based on the visioning plan, which is kind of been talked about. These are guides of things. These aren't set in stone, so. These aren't set in stone, so.
Yeah, and, and Josiah was concerned about, for example, trying to complete the, um, the sidewalk on George Street, I think, to Oak Crest because part of it was in Iowa City and there was a problem with a driveway there. And so, so he had some questions about that. And he also had some questions about the Marietta because, you know, there's two lots there and it goes into a tree. And that's kind of why I asked that question. It's a bit of a hill there and he saw, saw that as being problematical. So I think that's a kind of, uh, that's the kind of input we want. But yeah, it's a question of, is this what we want to do? And, and that's kind of what my report is. As the wrench in the works is, is how we deal with the Melrose beautif-, well, I'm jumping the gun. I'll wait until it's my turn to give the report and then I'll talk about, no.
I think we're on your report right now. I mean, we've been, you know, talking about the plan. So I, I do want to say that I think when Josiah and Doug walk around, and I think they can do some prioritizing and recommendation to the council on projects that should be addressed with the upcoming budget. I'm kind of expecting some of that. Uh, aren't you Casey?
Yeah, I, I just, you know, I, I just would like to put a deadline in it, on it because, you know, it's, it's kind of wishy washy, um, you know, and I don't want this to, you know, kind of drag on forever. Bobby put a limitation of three months, I think, on the five-year budget. And I think it's really important that we have some priorities and establish those and find out that we're all on the same page. Instead of this, you know, kind of improvising or, or as Jim Lane said, being completely opportunistic, which has its benefits. But, um, I think that can throw us off and, and we can wind up getting nothing done. So I would like to see a deadline on this and I would like to see it by the next meeting so that we can get, we can keep this thing moving along.
Well, I'm just asking, do we all realize we can do all these five-year plans and set up a list of things and the next council can come along and say, so what? And I'm, I guess I would also ask maybe Louise, I mean, we're talking the sidewalks that are listed here, you know, Mahaskam, Monroe, Ridgeview, Lemer, Highland, Golfview. Are we going to ask for public input or have some public?
Well, as you can see. As you can see from that report, um, we use a bunch of criteria, one of them being child safety, one of them being the condition of the street, whether or not there was a sidewalk there, what kind of input we would get from the, the people. And whether or not it was in the old part of town, which I favored because the infrastructure there is usually not as good. And so we have a criteria and it didn't, it didn't rise to the level of, you know, a priority of as far as being in the top five and, and, or top 10, I guess it was. And, and, um, and the criteria are things that this council has spelled out such as, you know, um, child safety, you know, the things that I just mentioned. So I think we have a criteria and it's, it's a way of setting priorities. And I think it, uh, yeah, I think that that's what it is intended to do. I think that I don't expect to not have any input. I wanted some input from the council and that was the, the purpose of that report. But I think if we ask someone to be a champion of a particular project, then we can expect to say, you know, this is your responsibility, you know, take care of it and then bring us back a reasonable proposal so that we can talk about it. And that's, that's what I think we're doing right now. But I'd like to have us talk about it and complete our work on this by next meeting. And that means that Doug and Josiah have got to check out the sidewalks and say, okay, yeah, fine, you know, this is, this, this meets that criteria and this is what I think it's going to cost. Basically critique the report that's on the table.
I think each, uh, each site is going to be graded in a, again, with your criteria that you're talking about, whether it's a safety concern, whether it's a potential safety concern, or whether you're just looking at something pretty. I mean, we're, we're going to make sure that our safety is always coming first. And that's how we're going to look at the street and sidewalk repair is if it comes down to safety, of course, we're going to do that first. And we're going to grade each site that we're looking at by that same criteria, whether or not it's a safety issue or if we're just looking to make it pretty. So I think we can probably go to each site and probably come up with a report for you so you have a good idea of why we're looking at each site.
That sounds, that sounds great Doug and thank you very much.
Casey, I think October would be a good date to have a good working draft of this document for everybody to look at.
Thanks Josiah.
So the repair of sidewalks that we had talked about before, like replacing entire sidewalks, is that going to be included in the streets part of it?
At this, at this point.
I asked that last time. That's something that we had talked about Josiah on the last council. I'm just unsure if that's being considered.
At this point, we've got a hundred thousand dollars budgeted for that. Exactly how we're going to do it is something we have to decide, but the money would be there based on that budget.
To do entire sections, entire streets of sidewalks or entire block, however Josiah?
Obviously you want, you want to ask this question of Josiah. So go ahead Josiah.
Do you recall when I'm talking about Josiah? I mean, so when you're.
Yeah, I assume what you're talking about is, was the discussion that happened after the sidewalk inspection program was, was paused. And the discussion at that point was, do we change the methodology? I don't think that's ever been fully talked through or vetted since then, so I, I do recall it, yes.
Yeah, and as I understand it from our discussion at the last council meeting, it was not in, not so much entire sidewalks, but we limited it to five panels, which are usually about what it takes to get around a tree. But, you know, if the council wants to make it more ambitious than that, then, then that's certainly worth talking about.
Well, I think once again, that's kind of talking about something a little different. So I don't think we're going to settle that here.
Well, like I say, this is, this is to, to have the money available to decide what we want to do, uh, how we want to do it, I think is something that we can take on later.
You mentioned Casey, you wanted to talk about Melrose Avenue project.
Yeah, Melrose Avenue is a, uh, what I understand it was, it, it's a primarily a beautification project. I mean, I read over the, um, information that Josiah gave me and it looks like there, there's $60,000 in there to acquire a bike lane on one side of the street. Uh, both, well, we've already got a bike lane, obviously, on one side of the street. And, and our original estimate, what University Heights could afford was $460,000 or thereabouts. It was 31% of a million 460, whatever that is. Well, it looks to me like the MPO said, I, I understand what you want, but what we're going to give you is half of the million 460. And we just rounded it up to, to a million five. So instead of us paying 460,000, we're suddenly paying 750,000. And 750,000 is, is quite a bit in terms of the five-year budget. But I don't want to, um, second guess past councils. These are good people that are making this decision and it was vetted with the MPO and, and trying to get money from anybody is, is very difficult. But I think it's fair game that we look critically at that project and, and see what exactly we have to have and what exactly we'd like to have. And, and perhaps trim a couple of hundred thousand dollars out of it so we can, we can be more in the, uh, the realm of the five-year budget. It wasn't mentioned by anybody as one of our priorities, which doesn't mean that it's not a priority because past councils have felt that it is and they've gotten the approval. But for example, they want to put, uh, as part of the project, they want to put in brick walkways and on George Street as well as Cozer. And it seemed to me there might be another material that would be a proper substitute that wouldn't be the kind of maintenance item that bricks involve. And particularly if you got 11,800 cars going on it every day, that's quite a thing to take on. So I, I questioned if we had to have that, um, that crosswalk at Cozer and, you know, what kind of use it would get for the maintenance costs that it would have and the cost of putting it in. The second thing I wondered about, um, I've appraised a lot of properties for condemnation over the last 35 years. And the initial estimate was $60,000 of land acquisition to put in the bicycle lane on the north side of Melrose. And I looked at that eight-foot wide sidewalk, which I, which I walk on just about every other day. And I'm passed by bicycles on that sidewalk and, and can accommodate them perfectly well. And it's also true of the other trails that I walk on. So I felt that putting in a, a $60,000 bike lane and acquiring property may not be necessary. There were several other items that I highlighted in my report, but I think we need to tighten the belt a little bit because we have to, you know, right now, I, I have no, no problem with, with bonding, but it's like Doug says, if it's beautification versus safety, then, you know, I think safety is imperative. And I'm not sure that everything in that proposal is safety. I do like the idea of burying the utility lines. You know, having toured Cedar Rapids right after the DeRachio, where they had, you know, at least 20 miles of telephone poles snapped off along Edgewood Road. So I'm thinking that as both form and function, it looks good and it also protects our power sources better. So I'm not, I, I'm, I'm continuing to be for this project, but I think that, uh, we need to, we need to trim it down a bit so that I, I find that we're not chasing money. And by that, I mean, you know, it's, it's very beguiling to go after a million 500,000 and, and only have to pay 750,000 of it. But if they were doing something like offering us a million dollars and we had to come up with $3 million, it's the same rationale. And at some point, it doesn't make any sense if we're trying to establish a budget and some priorities. And I would point out that the MPO only treats arterials, which is understandable because they're, they're looking at multiple communities, not just University Heights. But in fact, University Heights and some of the local streets and sidewalks are in, and I think considerable need. And that's another rationale for, um, reducing the budget for the, the Melrose project. Enough said.
Well, maybe we need, in listening to what you're saying and taking it all in, I mean, maybe we need a work session on, uh, to go over this project in detail. I mean, it was sent out to people and beautification isn't the word described in the project. It's a complete streets project. And, uh, you know, I'm, I serve on the regional trails and bicycle committee and it covers all of urbanized area policy board. And they want to drive through, ride their bikes through University Heights. They don't want to ride on sidewalks. The sidewalks are for the people. They, they want, uh, safe driving lanes, riding lanes, whatever you call them for bicyclists. So I mean, I, I see a lot of things I can address. I mean, on the wide sidewalk projects, we had money in there. We had to attain, uh, uh, right away and pay for that from citizens to make the eight-foot wide sidewalk, both on Sunset and, and so I'm just saying, maybe we need to have a work session and go over some of these things.
That sounds good to me Louise.
You know, so that everybody can understand, uh, all the details of it instead of trying to piecemeal here and there and what it is. Because in 2018, uh, the city, when, when it was presented and given back to the city, it was, the city is endorsing this project. They want this project. And so you have until, uh, October 1st, 2024 to plan for it and get it going and to figure out financing, et cetera, for it. And I've been trying to tell all councils, don't forget about this project. Don't forget about this project. I mean, and so then, I, I mean, everybody needs to review this project, even I do again, and relook at it. And so I'm thinking it might be helpful if we have a work session on it. So do you want to, you want to do that now? Shall we set something up? Does anybody else want to do it besides Casey and I?
I would be in favor of that. I know that would help me.
Okay.
So is there an outside person to bring in to go over this? Is it Josiah?
Well, it'd be Josiah, of course. And then it, we'd bring in probably somebody from the MPO, you know, Brad Newman maybe or Kent or one of the, one of the transportation planners and talk about it. I think that might be helpful.
That'd be great.
And, you know, whether, can we just cut this down to a million dollar project instead of a 1.5? You know, what would that mean, you know, finance wise? You know, I mean, I just don't think they're going to give us 730,000 for a million dollar project. You know what I mean? I mean, you know, we have to follow the rules. So let's, well, let's just go over that. So, uh, you want to do this sometime between now and October, I imagine?
Why don't we make it two weeks from tonight on Tuesday night at seven o'clock?
Do you need to start with the?
Calendar here. Two weeks from tonight is, this is September 8th, September 22nd. That's the date then, December, September 22nd. And then the date after that is the 29th and then we go into October 6th and the meeting is October 13th.
Why don't we put it out there as the 22nd and see who weighs in on it and if there's real problems, we can move it.
Well, what is, what is the rest of the council think of that? Okay, I see, okay. I like that sign. Okay, so I'm not hearing objections, so we'll put that out at 7:00 PM. Josiah, does that work for you?
Yeah, that, that works for me.
Okay, I'll check with MPO and see, cause, uh, you know, we'll need to get the, the maps that you sent around and go through the discussion of the bike lanes and how it changes the sidewalks and things.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we, we might also discuss the timing on it because I think that, you know, this has been a pretty tough year for everybody.
Yeah, the timing is what Josiah sent today to.
Yeah.
And, and, and actually it's better to talk about it too than just read it and talk about that timing. That'd be a good thing. We'll try to talk about everything and hopefully we can do this in about. and talk about that timing. That'd be a good thing. We'll try to talk about everything, and hopefully, we can do this in about an hour and a half, the most, maybe. You know, hour, hour and a half, we can get through that, okay? So do you have anything else, Casey, that you wanted to go over?
That does it for me, Louise, thanks.
Okay, so under your area, we put one of Steve's first consideration of ordinance number 248, amending ordinance number 110 rental housing code with respect to short-term rentals. And Steve, you wrote about it in your legal report.
Yes, thank you. I don't have a lot to add, I you know, I think that this council and some others really do get a pretty good flavor of what that concept of local control can mean or not mean, and that, and I'm not trying to take a side on it politically, but this is the real life, you know? The legislature in Des Moines has just whittled back time and again what, what cities can restrict in terms of rental properties. And this is the, this is the latest one, in 2020, the legislature really hammered down on cities and counties and said that we really can't do anything to restrict Airbnb-type rentals, including make them, you know, pass any sort of inspection or, or anything like that. The law is very clear that, that the city can't enforce anything with respect to a short-term rental like Airbnb, that it doesn't, that it doesn't enforce to the neighboring property, that it's just a house that where people live. The only exception is that we can require like emergency contact information if something were to, to happen. In 2018, the council had taken action to prohibit, effectively prohibit Airbnb-type rentals or the, the usual purpose-like football game weekend or something like that. Restricting rentals to, you know, not fewer than 30 days. So what this ordinance does is it just puts us in line with state law, and I don't think you have a lot of choice on this one.
Okay, so first consideration of ordinance number 248 is before you. Is there a motion? Motion by Sarah O'Sullivan, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, that was Doug, seconded by Doug. Okay, any discussion or questions for Steve? Okay, Mike, will you do a roll call vote?
Yes, here we go. Swales?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
O'Sullivan?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Carried.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to the eGovernment report, and Lisa, you sent a nice written report.
Thanks, Louise. Just picked a few things to put on there, so.
Yes, Lisa, I want to thank Lisa, all month long, you know, with the DeRachio, we kept in contact sometimes daily about how we can update the website to keep people informed of the citywide cleanup and, and, you know, once that started, and then could they assist with you know, kind of answering their questions about this isn't a leaf vacuuming, where, you know, it, it's not going to be raking everything, but if, if you can help clean the areas and, you know, help your neighbors, and I think it worked very well. And it cut down on some questions. Troy and the Police Department did a great job of fielding the questions, and I, of course, got a lot of questions, and really, it, it was done very well. It was done within two weeks once they started, and, and I think it went pretty well. I mean, everybody wanted their street taken care of, but it was kind of a learning curve to get going, and then they got going, and it was very good. And Troy walked around and talked to the people, that was a big key thing. And as he said in his report, they also did some traffic controlling, like especially on Melrose and things, to get cars around, and that worked out well. And anyway, it was just really good that Lisa kept updating the website, so I can't stress that tell your neighbors to look at the website, there's a lot of good information, and it, and it's constantly being updated. We're, we're trying to keep the information there, and and Lisa, thanks for doing that all month, that was very good.
Well, thanks for taking care of the pickup, Louise. I know you spent a lot of time on it, and thanks for helping me with the website.
Well, we're all in this together. We kind of helped, everybody was helping the neighbors and trying to connect a tree person here and there. And it worked pretty good as a whole big team. And so I really want to thank Troy, too, and the Police Department. So Lisa will keep doing more updates because we've got a few more events coming. And that goes to announcements. Are there any other announcements?
I have, I have one, Louise. We talked a bit about the DeRachio damage to the Sunset Trail Loop, as well as the trail loop that goes between Glencrest and Sunset. Dan and Virginia Miller cleaned every blockage on both of those trails off. Virginia brought home a couple of saws from her work, and she and Dan went out and did it in a weekend. I thought it was going to take a bunch of us several weeks, and so both those trails are completely clear. It was, that was a lot of work.
Oh, wow, thank you for mentioning their names. They didn't even tell me about that. Thank you. Yeah. That's good to know, and good that the trail is, you know, I do think doing some of that pruning in the fall that Virginia asked to get done really did help. Even though it was, you know, really did help the Swisher trap from being really bad, you know, in the, around the perimeter of the properties. Yeah, I think that did help. I think I talked to you about that, Mike, a little bit.
Yes.
Are there any other announcements or things people want to cover?
Yeah, I, I thought we did a nice job on the budget, and I think it got kind of short shrift. Bobby and I talked about this, I've been crowing about it for a while, and I realized that it would be a lot of extra work for Lori if she had to break down the budget on a per-month basis. But both Lori and Steve know the arc of how we spent money. And in order for us to understand that, if we compared year-to-date figures, which we have in the database, I believe, to, to this year-to-date, last year-to-date, we'd be able to say what areas of the budget are expanding, contracting. You know, it would eliminate all the timing issues, and it'd be relatively simple, and, and I know Lori isn't going to believe me, but it will be relatively simple. So that I think everybody can understand and make reasonable management decisions on the budget. And it, it would, we wouldn't, we could have it relative to the budget, but year-to-date last year versus year-to-date this year would help me immensely in understanding how much money we're spending, how it's flowing, what expenses to worry about, what expenses not to worry about. I'll give you an example. We show net income losses so far this year of $350,000. Now, that's extremely disconcerting, but we know that property taxes are going to be due next month. And so much of that, we don't know how much, is going to be resolved. If we had year-to-date figures, we'd know just how, how much we spent at this point of the year. And I wouldn't be worried about whether or not we're going to be, you know, how much of the tax burden we're going to be receiving. Another example might be the bond issues, whereas their, the principal is paid in December. But being able to anticipate that based on last year's and what we did last year, again, I think would be very helpful. So that's my two cents. I've been talking about this now for a little over eight months, and I think it's time that we entered the 21st century and were able to make reasonable management decisions and understand our own budgets and the money that we're spending. The second thing I'd say is, on the, the bills that we pay, I'd like to, like to, if you could total those up, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Did you talk to Bobby about this? I know Bobby just had texted me and said his computer was dying, and he was going to jump on the phone. So I don't know if he
Yeah, I talked to Bobby, he's on board with it.
Okay, very good. Anyway, I don't know if you see that, Mike, but anyway, we're
I don't, I don't see anybody else jumping back in.
Okay, well, anyway, we're towards the end of the meeting, so, and you did talk to Bobby about that.
Yeah, he's been informed.
Okay. Are there any, is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned by unanimous consent, and so we'll meet again September 22nd at 7:00 by Zoom. Thank you, everyone. Have a good
Thanks, Louise.
Thank you.